Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I love doing that. Everybody be quiet. That's a joke.
Can we hear you?
I'm broke together. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Midwest City Council August 22 version. Glad you're here. Don't gripe too much. Will you please stand? And Mr. Sullivan, would you lead us in prayer? And Ms. Sarah Hancock will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ask you to bow with me, please. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the day we've enjoyed today. Father, we thank you for this occasion tonight. And we just thank you for these men and women who serve on this council. And we thank you for their families that sacrificed while they're away. We ask that the decisions before them tonight will be made with your wisdom and your discernment. And Father, we ask you to give them peace in their decisions as well. Thank you so much for this great city that we live in and this great state and this great nation. We thank you for the men and women who are all over the world tonight defending our freedom that we enjoy in this great land. Protect them. Give them comfort and peace. Father, we thank you so much for your son, Jesus, and the comfort and peace and forgiveness that your son dying on the cross gives us. We ask these favors in your son's holy name. Amen.
A diligence to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Start with our August sales tax report. This takes in the time period over the Fourth of July and the airshow that brought literally hundreds of thousands of people to Midwest City. Our sales tax year over year at the same time last year was up 6.8%. So we're very, very happy about that. At the same time, we had a lot of ball tournaments at the MAC and at the Reed Baseball Complex from out of state. So we had a lot of visitors. And you can see it in the results of our sales tax. And always thankful to the citizens of Midwest City who shop here in their hometown. Just a reminder that we have two town hall meetings coming up next week on Tuesday and Thursday at 6:00 PM to discuss the September 12, 2023 sales tax election ballot where we are, we will be visiting about extending a current sales tax and what it'll be used for, for capital improvements and for our parks. So if you're, if you have time to show up for our town hall meeting, once again, six o'clock next Tuesday and next Thursday. Saturday, September 16 is our next Cruisin' for Coffee event in Santa Fe Parking Lot on 29th Street. Centrillium Proteins recently closed on 24 acres on Northeast 36th Street, right in front of the old animal shelter across the street to the south. It'll be the site of the new 112,000 square feet food processing plant. American Glass is about to close on 12 acres in Soldier Creek Industrial Park for its new headquarters and production facility. Looking forward to both of these prospects that staff and Mr. Coleman has led in bringing to Midwest City for some time, coming to fruition and coming to, coming out of the ground. So we're very excited about welcoming these two industrial prospects. They'll bring about 180 quality jobs, new jobs, to Midwest City and should be operational by 2024. Labor Day will be observed on Monday, September 4th. So trash and recycling services for those citizens of Midwest City who normally get their trash picked up on Mondays will be picked up on Wednesday, September 12, or Wednesday, September 6, excuse me, Wednesday, September 6. And finally, Matt, would you stand up? We have a new department head to introduce to everyone. This is Matt Summers, our new planning and zoning director. Matt comes to us with several years of planning experience. Not several, he has how many years now? Nine years with Georgetown Scott County Planning Commission out of Kentucky. Matt is originally from Oklahoma and has his bachelor's from a great school called Oklahoma State. Go Pokes! And has a master's degree in public administration from Western Kentucky University. So, welcome, welcome, Matt. He's married and has a three-year-old daughter that has moved here with him. So very happy to have him on our staff and is a part of our team here in Midwest City. And with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Lyon. We now move into our consent agenda. These items are placed on consent agenda so that the council, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any council member requests to discuss an item, or if unanimous consent cannot be received, then the item will be removed and heard in regular order. Chair to entertain a motion.
Make a motion to, I want to pull two of them first, number 15 and number 16.
So I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of 15 and 16. Do I have a second? I have a second. All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension, motion carries. 15, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion, consideration, possible action appointing Mrs. Avis Bonner to the Midwest City Historical Society as the Ward Five representative for a three-year term ending August 18, 2026.
The reason I pulled it, Mr. Mayor, is not an objection to Ms. Bonner or the next one, Marcus Hayes. It's the fact that we're putting these people on a committee right now that really doesn't exist. It's still in the formation. There's term limits on these. And what I would like to recommend to the council is that on these two and any subsequent ones that we do, that we make the date of their being placed on the committee to be the first date that they actually have a meeting. That way, it's, it could be after January till they have the first meeting. And it's really not fair to them that they sit in limbo for four months. So I make a motion to approve Ms. Bonner with the men, or the change that her effective date would be the date of the first meeting.
Second. I have a motion and a second and a third discussion. All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension, motion carries. Next item, 16, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion, consideration, possible action appointing Mr. Marcus Hayes to the Midwest City Arts Council as the Ward Five representative for a three-year term.
Again, it's not an objection to Marcus. I think we all know Marcus. He's very active in the community. He does a lot for this city. I just would like to make the motion to approve him, but put the date of his appointment, the first date of the, the date of the first meeting.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension, motion carries. Moving, there's discussion items. This is a public hearing. Discussion item number one, Mr. Lyon.
Public hearing, discussion, consideration, possible action, provide information, answer questions pursuant to Title 62, Section 59 of the Oklahoma statutes regarding the amendment to the provisions of the project plan relating to the increment District Number Three, City of Midwest City, Oklahoma. One, to provide $450,000 in development financing assistance to American Glass, Inc., in connection with the development of a new headquarters and manufacturing facility to be located in Soldier Creek Industrial Park, 7450 Northeast 23rd. And second, to provide funds in the amount of $5,600,000 for the construction of utility improvements to serve the 102,488 square feet, square foot Centrillium Protein Plant located approximately 7210 Northeast 36th Street with such facilities be operated by Centrillium Protein, Inc. and Oklahoma Corporation. Three, to provide funding for rail line improvements in the amount of $3 million to serve the Centrillium site and reduce its cost of interstate transport and to serve the Soldier Creek Industrial Park and the AGI site. And four, to fund $750,000 for public improvements, public improvement projects in the Northeast 23rd corridor. Mr. Coleman.
Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Mayor, I'm not going to go into great detail tonight between the agenda item title and the information contained in your packet. I think you probably all understand the issue. Public improvement costs have come in a little higher than what we expected. We hadn't even gone to bid yet, but the engineers expect that they'll go over what our original budget was. And thus, we need to lengthen the term of the district as well as the total amount that we have for the goal of the district. In addition, we have the change going from Two American Glass Incorporated from Global Turbine Services. An overview of the prescribed changes are outlined in the cover memo, and more in-depth information can be found in the actual First Amendment to the North Side District, which is on pages 97 to 117 of your packet. And tonight, our legal counsel for TIF districts, Mr. Dan McMahon, will go through the public hearing and read what he needs to do for this first public hearing. The second public hearing will be at the September meeting, and that will be your first chance to take action on the item.
Mayor, members of the council, Mr. City Manager, city staff members, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. My name is Dan McMahon, and it's my privilege tonight to provide information to the public on behalf of the City of Midwest City regarding a proposal to amend the provisions of an existing tax increment district located within the boundaries of the city. This public hearing is being held pursuant to Section 859 of the Oklahoma Local Development Act found entitled 62 of the Oklahoma statutes. On September 26, 2023, this city council will be considering the adoption of an ordinance which would formally amend Increment District Number Three, City of Midwest City, Oklahoma, and also approve the terms and conditions of a First Amendment to Project Plan relating to this district and to several important economic development projects within the city. Prior to the adoption of such an ordinance, Oklahoma law requires that the city hold two public hearings related to this matter. This is the first of these two public hearings. As stated by Section 859 of the Local Development Act, the purpose of this public hearing is to provide information to the public regarding the proposed ordinance amending the project plan and the related tax increment district, and to respond to questions that anyone may have regarding this proposal. The purpose of the second public hearing will be to receive comments from the public regarding the ordinance and the proposed amendment to this tax increment district. The second public hearing will be held in this room on September 26, 2023, at 6:00 PM as part of that night's regular city council meeting. The ordinance being considered would amend the terms and conditions of a project plan relating to Increment District Number Three, City of Midwest City, Oklahoma. Under Oklahoma law, a tax increment district is a special type of district in which certain incremental tax revenues are used to pay for project costs which benefit the district, or in the alternative to pay principal and interest on any indebtedness which has been incurred for the purpose of paying such costs. Once these costs or the related indebtedness has been paid, then these incremental tax revenues flow back to the original taxing jurisdictions. The district being proposed for amendment by the city, officially known as Increment District Number Three, City of Midwest City, Oklahoma, is comprised of a tract of land located immediately south and adjacent to Northeast 23rd Street between North Air Depot Boulevard and North Post Road. The district also extends north of Northeast 23rd Street roughly along the city's municipal boundary line to a point just north of Northeast 36th Street. From there, the district follows the line one-half mile east of North Air Depot Boulevard back to Northeast 23rd Street. Under the terms of the project plan, as amended by the First Amendment to Project Plan, the Midwest City Economic Development Authority would be authorized to provide development financing assistance to American Glass, Inc. or its affiliate in the amount of $450,000 to incentivize this company to locate its new headquarters and manufacturing plant within the Soldier Creek Industrial Park. And such location is currently and under this amendment will remain within this increment district. The First Amendment to Project Plan also includes the authorization for the funding of certain utility improvements that would serve Centrillium Proteins, which was referred to as Project Oscar in the original project plan. These utility improvements would total approximately $5,600,000. A third category of projects now include certain rail improvements to serve both of these companies. The project costs for these improvements total $3 million. The fourth category of projects in the First Amendment to the Project Plan includes the payment of project costs for the implementation of the Vision 23 project. This project was originally described in the initial project plan. The amount for this project remains unchanged at $750,000. The First Amendment to the Project Plan also deletes references to Global Turbine Services, Inc., and its plans to construct and operate an advanced jet engine maintenance and testing center. Unfortunately, Global Turbine Services decided not to locate this facility within the Soldier Creek Industrial Park. In addition, the total project cost for the utility improvements and railway improvements have also increased from the original estimates, causing the total project cost for the amended project plan to be approximately $10,750,000, or roughly $1,850,000 more than the initial project plan. Because the projected project costs will increase by more than 5% of the original project costs, the Oklahoma Local Development Act requires that this amendment to the project plan be presented first to the Midwest City Local Development Act Review Committee for its recommendation. And this amendment was presented to a special meeting of the review committee on July 19, 2023. At that meeting, the committee adopted a resolution making findings and recommendations to the Midwest City City Council. These findings and recommendations are available for review in the office of the City Manager for all interested persons. At that meeting, as required by the Oklahoma Local Development Act, the review committee made its findings and recommendations with respect to the conditions establishing the eligibility of the district as amended, as well as to the findings in regard to the financial impact on the taxing jurisdictions and the business activities within the district. The review committee also included in its resolution the analysis used to project revenues over the life of the project plan, the effect on the taxing entities, and the appropriateness of the approval of the proposed plan as amended. Under the ordinance being considered by this council, all incremental or new ad valorem revenues will be separated from the existing ad valorem tax revenues generated within the district and used to pay project costs incurred in connection with these projects. To the extent that the city or the authority elects to pay these costs from other funds of either entity, the project plan allows for these costs to be reimbursed to the city or the authority from future increment revenues. The proposed district would have a maximum date of 20 years from the ordinance's effective date. After 20 years, the district will terminate whether or not all project costs have been recouped through incremental taxes unless the term of the district is extended by action of a future city council. However, the district may terminate earlier than that date under two circumstances. First, if all project costs described in the project plan are paid or reimbursed prior to the 20-year anniversary of the district, then the district will automatically terminate. Second, if the citizens of the city vote to terminate the district prior to its scheduled termination date as a result of a vote held pursuant to the initiative and referendum powers set forth in the Oklahoma Constitution, then this district may terminate earlier than the 20-year anniversary date provided for in the project plan. The project plan also would authorize the Midwest City Economic Development Authority to issue a special type of revenue bond or note known as a tax apportionment bond or note. However, the city does not expect that this type of financing will be used in connection with this district. There are several potential positive impacts which may result from the approval of the ordinance and the adoption of the project plan. First, the development financing assistance will induce the two companies to invest approximately $80 million in aggregate within Increment District Number Three. And this investment, which will create a significant number of temporary jobs in the construction-related industries, will also create approximately 220 time, excuse me, 225 full and part-time jobs. Third, this new investment by these two companies will give rise to new ad valorem tax revenues from within the proposed tax increment district. The project plan estimates that approximately $20 million in new ad valorem taxes will be generated during the 20-year term of the district. And when the district expires, these new revenues will benefit the ad valorem taxing entities. The use of tax increment financing in this fashion also has several additional advantages. First, no new tax dollars which are now being received by any taxing jurisdiction will be utilized to pay for any of the proposed project costs. Only increases in ad valorem tax revenues generated within the boundaries of the district will go towards the payment of these costs. Second, the creation of this tax increment district will not cause an increase in tax rates for existing ad valorem taxes levied within the district. And third, there will be no new types of taxes imposed as part of this plan. In short, the only tax revenues which will be impacted by this ordinance and the related project plan are those tax revenues that result from the new private investment occurring within the proposed tax increment district. However, the use of tax increment financing also may have one potentially negative impact. If it is the case that significant private investment either by these two companies or other private entities will be made within the boundaries of the district in the next few years without the need for any development assistance by the city or the authority, then the incremental tax revenues generated from that private investment might be said to have accrued anyway. If that were the case, then the use of a tax increment district would result in the ad valorem taxing entities foregoing much-needed tax revenues unnecessarily. As mentioned, this amended project plan has been evaluated by the Midwest City Local Development Act Review Committee. And when this issue was discussed with the members of the review committee, the committee unanimously concluded that the proposed private investments would not have occurred without the financing assistance contained in the project plan as amended. And therefore, there would be no significant adverse financial impact for the ad valorem taxing entities. In addition, the city's review committee also recommended the adoption of the project plan and the amendment of Increment District Number Three. And I should also mention that the city planning commission reviewed the amended project plan and found it to be consistent with the objectives and intent of the comprehensive plan of the City of Midwest City and recommended that the project plan be approved by this council. At this time, Mayor, I'd be happy to try and answer any questions that anyone may have regarding the proposed amendment to this tax increment district.
Thank you, Mr. McMahon. Ladies and gentlemen, the council, there's no action needed on this particular item tonight. And ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. Does anyone have anything to bring before the council or Mr. McMahon regarding this particular project or TIF district?
I'd like to say something. I'm on the committee that he talks about in, he doesn't, he doesn't take a lot of credit for this, but when we finished meeting, across the board, and the people that are in the room are also involved in other TIFs in other cities. Won't say where, but they're involved in other TIFs in other cities. You know, it's the health department, it's the library system, it's the school systems. And to a person, everybody said that this is the most transparent way that TIFs are done, that they wish that they were all done like this. Because what we're asking is these people not to, they could turn it down very easily. But there was hardly any discussion. They all agreed that the locations of these two, these two locations wouldn't be developed if not for, but for the TIF. So I appreciate the work that you've done. This is the second group that I've been involved in with you, and it's the majority of the same people on the first TIF, on the second TIF. And like I said, when they walked out, they said they wished all the TIFs were done like this. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. And once again, does anyone have anything to bring before the council concerning this discussion item? Hearing none, we'll move on to discussion item number two. Mr. McMahon, thank you for your hard work for us, and we look forward to seeing you again. We'll move on to item number two, Mr. Lyon.
PC 2149, tabled from the July 25, 2023 city council meeting, public hearing, discussion, consideration, possible action of approval of the replat of all of lots three and four in Block One of Friendly Acres, addition being more particularly described as follows, commencing at Northwest Corner, the Northwest Quarter of Section Five Township 11 North Range, One West, Indian Meridian, Oklahoma County, Oklahoma. Ms. Ritchie.
Thank you. Mr. Brian Funderberg requested a replat of all of lots three and four in Block One of Friendly Acres, which would subdivide the parcel into nine vacant lots, including eight buildable lots and another use for common area. If approved, all development standards and regulations for single-family detached must be observed. The city engineer's office is scrutinizing the sanitary sewer collection system in an area that includes Friendly Acres. The applicant was advised of the situation and warned of the resulting study's potential impact on new developments. Engineering hired a consultant to help evaluate the situation, and based on those findings, city staff is formulating a policy for city council's future review. Following required public notice, staff received comments from two surrounding property owners who both supported the proposal. One owner expressed the need to resolve the mailbox situation on the west side of Friendly Road. He stated that residents on that side had erected mailboxes on their properties, but the post office told them it would not deliver mailboxes on the west side. The post office required the residents to put mailboxes on east side of the street. The caller was concerned new development on the east side of the street would cause further problems. The applicant was present at the July 5, 2023 Planning Commission meeting and spoke in favor of the development. Planning Commission subsequently recommended approval of the item, but action is at the discretion of the council. Pursuant to city ordinance, city council must take action within 60 days of the date the planning commission took action, or the item will be deemed approved. The 60-day timeframe on this item for city council action ends on September 3, 2023, but due to weekend and holiday, the timeframe officially ends on September 5, 2023.
Ladies and gentlemen, we've heard discussion on this, and we also know that there wouldn't any impact on the, on the study that we received. So the chair to entertain a motion.
Public hearing.
I'm sorry, this is a public hearing. Does anyone have anything to bring before the council concerning this discussion item? Hearing or seeing none, once again, chair to entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye. Opposed?
Abstain. Since I was on the planning commission when that was originally heard.
This is like seven in a row.
This is it. That's the last one. That's the last one.
Therefore, we'll have to refer to a, to a roll call vote. Ms. City Clerk.
Eads. Byrne. Reed. Dukes.
The motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Ritchie. Appreciate it. Item number three, Mr. Lyon.
PC 2144, public hearing, discussion, consideration, possible action of an ordinance to redistrict from single-family detached residential district R6 to manufactured home district RMH2, and a resolution to amend the comprehensive plan from the single-family detached residential to manufactured home for the property described as a part of the Northwest Quarter, Section 25 Township 12 North Range, two west of the Indian Meridian and Oklahoma County, also known as 2117 Randolph Street, Midwest City, Oklahoma. Ms. Ritchie.
Mr. John Carroll, the applicant, request to amend the comprehensive plan from single-family detached residential to manufactured home and to rezone the subject property from single-family detached- Single Family Detached Residential District to Manufactured Home Park District. The applicant is proposing a 106-lot recreational vehicle resort for their property, as well as a community swimming pool. The municipal code allows for no more than fifteen travel trailers per gross acre in a travel trailer park. Thus, 105 lots would be the maximum allowed. The park would have to meet all other applicable city code regulations. If the facility cannot meet city code 43115, it still must comply with 43108 and 43109. There is no provision in city code for moving sewerage outside the city limits. Their proposed development does not meet the criteria for onsite waste disposal. Therefore, the owners are responsible for extending the municipal sewer in accordance with ODEQ and city regulations, or they must find a means of proper waste disposal. Randolph Avenue and Asphalt Street in poor condition is only sixteen foot to eighteen foot wide and may not be wide enough to accommodate a typical recreational vehicle. If rezon is approved, the applicant will then proceed with their preliminary and final plat processes, including all necessary public improvements. Building permits remain unavailable until approval of the final plat. Following proper public notice, staff received one call from a surrounding property owner in opposition. The city, I'm sorry, the citizen voiced concern of the existing property maintenance, as well as road conditions not suitable for the proposed use, also was concerned about the additional traffic and its effect on Randolph Avenue. Applicants represented representative requested to table the item at July 5, 2023 Planning Commission to August 1, 2023, so sanitary sewer issues could be discussed with public works. The applicant's representative canceled the meeting approximately thirty minutes prior to its scheduled start since they were unable to reach the applicant. The applicant's representative requested no action be taken at the August 1, 2023 Planning Commission Meeting. However, Planning Commission recommended to deny the item. Chairman Smith and his fellow commissioners did not want to give applicant false assurance the item will be approved if, when he decides to have it formally considered. The location and overall road conditions are of main concern. Action is at the discretion of the council.
Given all that information, ladies and gentlemen, I'd entertain a motion to deny.
Public hearing.
It is a public hearing, I'm sorry. I keep forgetting that. Does anyone have anything to bring forth, council, concerning this item? Hearing or seeing none, chair would entertain a motion to deny.
I don't believe so.
Have you heard from the applicant?
No, sir.
I have a properly formed motion and a second. All in favor indicate saying aye.
This is the last.
And once again, we'll move to a roll call vote. Ms. City Clerk.
Eads.
Deny.
Byrne.
Deny.
Dawkins.
Abstain.
Reed.
Deny.
Dukes.
Deny.
Thank you, Ms. Ritchie. Item number four, Mr. Lyon.
PC 2151, Public Hearing, Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Action of a Resolution to Amend the Comprehensive Plan from Office Retail to Medium Density Residential Land Use, and an Ordinance to Redistrict from, from Restricted Commercial District C1 to Medium Density Residential for the property described as a southeast quarter of Section 35 Township 12 North Range Two West of the Indian Meridian, Oklahoma County, also known as Canale 2 Douglas BL Edition Blocks Two, Lots Five, Six, Seven, and Eight.
Thank you. Mr. Anders Goodman, the applicant, on behalf of the owner, James Grave, has requested an amendment to the comprehensive plan from Restricted Commercial District to Medium Density Residential and to rezone the subject property to Medium Density Residential. Applicant proposes the building of two to four quadplexes with four separate dwelling units in each building, ranging from 1,100 to 1,400 square feet each, with two to three bedrooms and one to two bathrooms each. Access is planned from a U-shaped drive that would have ingress and egress from North Douglas Boulevard. Zoning approval will allow the applicant to proceed with the preliminary and final plat processes, including all necessary public improvements. Building permits are unavailable until the final plat is accepted and approved. If rezon is approved, the development regulations for medium density residential districts shall be observed, as well as exterior construction requirements and landscaping requirements. Staff also recommends a pre-construction meeting with the owner and contractors. Public notice requirements were fulfilled, but no comments have been received from anyone for or against the proposal at the time of this report. The applicant was present at Planning Commission and addressed the commission. Two citizens addressed the commission. One voiced concern of which way the units would be facing because he thinks it would restrict his privacy and that they could see into his yard and door window. Ms. Ritchie stated that the current zoning would allow someone to pull a permit for the appropriate commercial use without having to go through Planning Commission or council that could have the same potential concerns, but at a higher intensity level. City of Midwest City's direct operations director, Ryan Rushing, described the need for backyard access for all units. Despite a neighbor's objection to the development over privacy concerns, the Planning Commission recommended approval of this application. Action is at the discretion of council.
This is a public hearing. Does anyone have anything to bring before council concerning this issue? State your name and address for the record, please.
It's Anders Goodman, 601 Crestview in Edmond.
What do you got planned?
Like she said, two to four quadplexes, that'd be four units in each one, with a roundabout driveway that has access to the two in the back, two in the front, so that if there ever was a fire, the fire trucks could go right in and ride back out, no trouble.
Are these going to be rental properties or for sale individually?
The plan is to rent them. In the future, I don't know what the, the investor would want to do with it, but the plan for now is to rent them.
Anyone have any questions with applicant?
I'm gonna move to approve this item with the prerequisite of the pre-construction meeting that staff is requesting, as well as the backyard access that Mr. Rushing described. So with those two prerequisites or caveats, I move to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Dawkins, you okay with this one?
Got to vote that time.
First time.
Thank you, council, Mr. Mayor.
You bet. Thank you. Motion passes. Item number five, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion, Consideration, Possible Action Improving the Integrated Supply Agreement with NAPA for Onsite Turnkey Vehicle and Equipment Parts Operation for the fiscal year 2324, with optional annual renewal for four additional one-year periods, and an approximate yearly cost of $900,000. This is replacing the O'Reilly's contract that we've had a few years. We originally started this, down this path, we had an internal parts department, and it became very cumbersome and expensive for us to operate that, and we contracted with NAPA. NAPA has been a, was a very good partner and a partner of our community as well. They supported many community events. So we are happy to recommend NAPA coming back to the city and would.
Move to approve.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension motion carries. Item number six, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion, Consideration, Possible Action Amendment Number Two for Professional Services with Freeze Nichols Inc. in the amount of 102,645 to provide services to further the assessment of the current sanitary sewer system and future capacity needs Phase One. So this is back on the agenda from last council meeting with amendments as we discussed, with looking at not just the east side sewer district, but also improvements on the west side as far as capital improvements, the overall infrastructure of the cities. We're gonna face many seventy-year-old issues with water and sewer lines. And in addition, we added a, what we call a condition study, where over the next ninety days, we're gonna take a hard look at the lift stations. We went out and visually looked at the lift stations, met with staff. Mr. Streets provided a, a tour, and, and we got to met with, meet with the staff that actually operate these and maintains these lift stations. Very interesting, and have much greater, better understanding of this process and the short and long-term impact of what we're facing in capacity. We want to look at some short-term analysis that can help us just with what the structure we have in place with pumps and that sort of thing, horsepower is and all, anything we can do to, to improve the capacity for the next item where we are facing roughly 226, and that includes what we just approved with Friendly Acres, 226 new houses in, on the east side that are currently under, or in the construction phase of some kind in the plating phase.
So I want to just say thank you very much to you, Mr. Lyons, and to you, Mr. Bundy, and to you, Mr. Streets, for listening to our concerns, in particular, my concerns about this item from the last meeting. And with that, unless anybody has anything they want to talk about with this, I was gonna move to approve this item.
Brandon, did I miss anything?
No. Great.
I know you want to talk, Brandon.
Go ahead. It's too hot for that. I was, I was advised that if the heat index is over a hundred, I shouldn't wear a tie.
By whom?
Mr. Von Sullivan.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, where's your tie?
You want to make a point of order, Ms. Eads? You do have a motion on the floor. I've got a motion and a second. All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? You're out of order, Reed. Item number seven, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion, Consideration, Possible Action of a Resolution to declare a moratorium for new construction and new development that'll connect to the Midwest City Waste Collection System that serves a portion of the east side of Midwest City. I introduced this, some of that topic a minute ago with the 226 houses that we have in some phase of approval through the, through the, either the construction or somewhere in the, the plating process. So I'm gonna turn, turn this item over to Dawn first, and then Brandon and Paul will speak. Go ahead. Mr. Marsh.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. In your packet is the draft moratorium. The initial portion of it goes through the findings by Freeze and Nichols that was presented to you last week. Also included in that is the map of the area. It is the purple shaded area in the map that is in your packet. From that point, then, it goes down and says, based on the study, starting tomorrow, which is August 23rd, if approved, the city council would introduce or establish a moratorium. That moratorium would cover that the city would not approve any further preliminary plats, would not approve any minor plats. So those two take care of residential subdivisions, as well as individual, what we used to call lot splits. There would be no new construction permits allowed, or that would be issued either to connect a new commercial facility, or to issue a construction permit that would add volume to the wastewater system if they are already connected. A commercial facility that wanted to do just remodeling would still be allowed to do that. No construction permits would be issued if we've issued a preliminary plat. There would be a moratorium on those, unless they've already received their DEQ wastewater permit. If they've received their DEQ wastewater permit, and they're far enough down the road that they would be included in that number that Mr. Lyon gave you, so those would be moving forward. Additionally, there would be no new sewer tap approved or installed on any residential site that is not included in a preliminary plat for the city. Now, that's what the moratorium would cover. There would be some exceptions. There would be basically two. Number one, if a, anybody could show that they were going to do development or do construction, and they could put on a system that meets DEQ requirements for either individual or a small public sewage disposal system under those regulations, then that would be allowed. Secondly, if they could demonstrate that they could develop and move that wastewater out of that purple basin that is described in the packet, and that's on the map, if they could somehow get it outside that basin and put it to the wastewater treatment system through lift stations that are not included within that basin, that would be allowed as well. The final provisions of the moratorium would be, one, that it's amendable by this body at any given time, and that, two, the moratorium will come back before this body at a minimum once every six months for the body to look at, review, decide if any changes need to be made, and how we are progressing. And with that, Tim, either you or Brandon.
Yeah, so what I'd like to add is, once again, the 226 houses that, that are basically under, under the plats that are, that are approved by council in the building phase, the development phase, we feel comfortable at this point that we can go ahead and build these houses, and then we'll look at what capacity, what impact capacity has as far as any upgrades we can make in the ninety days. Freeze and Nichols will help us with that. If we come back and think we can add some houses or a certain amount of volume, we'll do that. We're, we're not terribly optimistic that's gonna happen, but we will make every attempt to, to improve capacity that we can in the short term.
I have two questions. And I'm gonna direct this to you, sir. So the first one is with regard to, is there a requirement with moratorium to have any appeal mechanism in place, or our authority allows us to put forward a straightforward moratorium, and it's just binding on anyone who would apply from essentially tomorrow forward if it were to pass?
Right. We don't necessarily, you can put an appeal mechanism in there. It is not absolutely necessary. We did not, in this one, put down an appeal mechanism. What we did instead was we made exceptions and gave people, developers, individuals, alternatives to, to getting around the moratorium. Making, we made exceptions as opposed to an individual case-by-case appeal process.
Okay. And my second question is more broadly based. One, given the importance of this issue, I know you referenced a six-month follow-up, but I was wondering if we could change that to be a ninety-day follow-up or status for this body type of thing, just given the, essentially, the seriousness of this moratorium?
What I would say about that, Ms. Eads, is that I made the six-month a minimum. It can be brought back, what it basically says, it can be brought back anytime, but at a minimum, it would be brought back once every six months. So that is a minimum. If the city council wishes to it, for it to come back sooner, it, absolutely, that can be done.
That's just my personal opinion on the ninety days, and I understand, I understand the way it's written, I just.
Right. And, and we can keep it the way it is written and make a commitment that at least on the first one, we'll bring it back in three months and put it back on the agenda in three months.
Freeze Nichols is gonna need ninety days, so, I mean, until they bring something back, I mean, as soon as they get us something, we'll put it on.
And then we can, when the Freeze and Nichols study comes, we'll put this back on the agenda as well.
Mr. Streets, I've got a couple of questions for you.
Thank you.
Okay. The reason for this moratorium is our inability, because of the equipment we have in place at the three left lift stations, the inability to them to push the wastewater onto the water treatment plant, correct?
We don't. I'd prefer to stand up there, if that's okay.
That's perfectly fine.
I wouldn't say inability. I'd say that we have limited capacity with the lift stations and conveyance system in the east side of town. Essentially, everything that feeds the Edgewood Lift Station, which, again, we got a chance to tour. That's, we've got a couple of pinch points, and we're also at capacity in a couple of lift stations.
Okay. Is there any chance that, once we evaluate this, we're talking about maybe making improvements and adding pump capacity, is there any chance that these improvements would allow us to move off the moratorium?
What I would say is that that's our hope, is to get some idea, if not moving off the moratorium, at least determining what steps we can take to improve the system, to add capacity. We don't know until we've had the condition assessment, Mayor, exactly what we're, what we've got in store for us. I think that this is the best next step. Truth be told, I think we're all very lucky that some decisions were made by leadership and engineering staff and public work staff to endeavor for this study to begin with. Had we not done that, I think we'd find ourselves in a very difficult position, because I don't know that, that anyone would have wanted to see. know that anyone would have wanted to see substantial impacts to our creeks, streams, and existing infrastructure. A failure, for instance, of the Edgewood Lift Station would mean that we had the inability to pump almost half of our system to the plant. So, it's a big deal, a bigger deal than I think we've made it. I don't know that we've given it the same priority with previous iterations of leadership. That's what I would say.
Let's say, hold on. Let's say the edge, which one, which one we talking about, the Edgemire or the Edgewood?
Edgewood's the big one.
Let's say that failed.
Yes.
What happens?
Then roughly three and a half million gallons a day of raw sewage goes into the creek.
Well, that's significant. Okay, thank you. One other thing, can you arrange for some of us to tour those lift stations as well on the council?
Absolutely, with Tim's approval.
Sure, absolutely.
At your leisure.
Absolutely. We'll make that happen.
I have a policy, I think a policy question, and it goes to Dawn, too, and to you guys. Okay, so I think I heard you say that there are some exceptions.
That is correct.
Which, here, I'm not an engineer, and I'm not an attorney, so that, it sounded to me that you were saying that if a developer wanted to put houses in that were basically bigger, and they wanted to put in an alternate system, which would be septic or any number of different ones, their choice.
Correct.
That's not cheap. It's a little bit expensive. They do that. And then at some point, I would hope that we wouldn't come back and force them to hook into the sewer system, because they've already spent that money, because I don't think that would be fair to the developers, that they followed the rules, and then we're going to say, oh, by the way, you're going to hook into our system now. I would hope that would be the plan. Crickets.
So, yeah, there's some equity issues that if we, one, that'll, they'll have to come through the plating process, and, I mean, this will all come to this council, and that will all have to be worked out and approved by this council on how that'll work, and, you know, it'll depend on the developer as well, on how they create the easements and what it looks like in the future, and the size of the development, and if it's phased in. But there'll be multiple, there'll be multiple factors that affect that, but as far as somebody goes and, for example, puts 10 one-acre lots in with houses and those systems in, it would not be fair to make them tie on, or force them to tie on at their cost at that point. We're not saying they wouldn't tie on, but we may be in a position where, you know...
We would give them the option, correct?
Well, that's, it's not going to be, I hope.
I would hope not.
I think that's something we're going to count on you guys, the three of y'all and the people that you answer to, to have some direction on that, because we're not going to be here forever.
And we'll have to look at ways on how we're going to implement that, but that will be something, obviously, at Tim's direction, that we would implement in some form or fashion.
Well, it'll come back to this council as well.
Right. And that implementation, yes, would come back before the council.
And that's when we get to come back and sit in the audience and say, y'all stupid, don't do that.
I just don't want somebody that's playing by the rules, that goes out and builds four, five, 10 houses that are bigger size, and they invest in it. Cost is going to go up, but I don't think it would be fair, a year or two down the road, you set a timeout, now you got to hook into our system.
I agree with you 100 percent.
To put those systems in will require much larger lots, somewhere, Brandon, between...
Three-quarter, an acre to...
Three-quarter to an acre lots.
To one acre.
Yeah.
So, we're really not telling them they can't build. They just, we don't have the sewer capacity for them to hook into.
That's correct.
They can choose to build bigger lots, bigger houses, and put whatever those systems he talked about in.
Okay. Is there any further discussion or questions? Chair to entertain a motion?
Not on this one.
But there's not even some that...
I have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension? Motion carries. We now, ladies and gentlemen, we now move into new business public discussion. This is where a public can come and address the council. There's two people that have signed up to address the council. I want to remind you that, Senator, it's not an agenda item. We cannot address you or engage into a back-and-forth conversation with you. It would be a direct violation of the Open Meetings Act. With that being said, Mr. Goldschlager, you signed up, and you know the drills, sir.
I know the drill. Glenn Goldschlager, 1409 Evergreen Circle, Midwest City, Oklahoma. While we're talking about utilities, we need to give ourselves a pat on the back. There are 17 cities in central Oklahoma on water rationing right now. That, we're not, and that didn't happen by accident. It happened because of the very thing we are discussing now with sewer. It takes years to get infrastructure right. The ISO rating that the fire department has is 40 percent water. There's a lot of cities in central Oklahoma that would have that rating if it wasn't for water, so we need to thank our water department for that. The other thing I'd like to talk about is, during the budget negotiations, there was a lot of talk about not getting enough public input on the, on it. We have 34 neighborhood associations in Midwest City where we have representatives on them. Yeah, we talk to them and tell them things to keep their community safer, but they also get feedback, and that feedback then comes in and is part of the process for building a budget. We also have 32 boards, committees, and commissions that are made up of hundreds of people in Midwest City. They all do this for free, and many of them have been on it for many years and have a lot of expertise on what they do and recommend to you, and all of that is part of the budget. And then we put the budget online for people to actually read. It would be nice for the state of Oklahoma or the federal government to do it, where just vote on it and read it later. No, we put it out there more than a month in advance, and I go through that budget. Every single line and everything, question I have, I send an email to the department head, and I get an answer. It's nothing special. I don't get a special copy of it. It is out there for everybody to read. The department head's names are on the top. Their emails and their telephone numbers are on our website, and I write all of them, and I get answers from all of them. The mayor will tell you, him and I disagree on lots of things, but he always answers. And Tim answers me late at night, because that's when he has the time to do it. But I never write a department head that I don't get an answer, and I'm nobody special. I'm just a citizen. So, when somebody talks about this city not being inclusive on the budget, or hiding things, or making accusations, that's just wrong. This is a great city. The problem with people is, because they don't happen to agree with something, there's a problem. No, you're not going to agree with everything. I may not like everything that's in the budget, but it is plainly stated, everything we do. That's all I have to say. Thank all of you.
Thank you, Glenn. Oh, you can give better applause than that. Mr. Teal.
I live at 1128 Sun Valley Drive here in Midwest City, Oklahoma City. I'm here tonight to talk about the traffic and safety petition 449. Every administrative hurdle I experienced to get a petition before anyone in the city is now formalized in this application process. These application changes are being made to prevent another removal petition to ever make it past the city engineer. This might not be a problem if the city followed the national safety standard, but the city does not. Public safety is the foundation of every national standard written by the federal government. The US Department of Transportation publishes the manual on uniform traffic control devices. Regardless of opinions, the EMUTCD code is the national safety standard that applies to all public roads in the United States. Responsibility for public safety and conformity to the national safety standard does not rest on the petitioners or neighborhood slash homeowner associations who do not know what the EMUTCD safety standard is. Instead, public safety and responsibility for conformity falls on the city government. The EMUTCD national safety standard is clear. Stop signs should not be used for speed control. On North Peabody, the original petition, the main points of discussion at the Traffic and Safety Committee, and even before the city council, was about speeders, speeding, and speed control. In 2017, the left lane law went into effect on Oklahoma interstates. Why is this? Impeding the flow of traffic induces road rage. For more than five years, the Oklahoma State Legislature's learned a crucial safety lesson that Midwest City has not. Impeding traffic flow causes road rage. Unwarranted stop signs impede traffic flow. If public safety was at the forefront, if saving lives is of utmost importance, the city council would have followed the national safety standard, but they did not. The 300-foot canvas rule only demonstrates that the city and its engineering department does not fully understand the extent of the influence that traffic control devices have in a neighborhood. The city councils are aware of this, because the two residents on Twilight, who live well beyond 300 feet of the stop signs, came before the city council and stated they have seen the road rage on their street. They have seen an increase in the level of speed and the number of speeders. Instead of stating a similar opinion, I provided the city council with results of traffic studies, which stated stop signs cause more hazards than they solve. The citizens who found themselves in a higher hazard area because they live outside the 300-foot deceleration zone were ignored, and with this due application, there is no chance that anyone outside the 300-foot zone will be ever hurt again. Sure, anyone can sign a petition under the new process, but only those who live within the 300-foot benefit area get to vote. The rest do not. This is a known fact, because the city council's already demonstrated that last May, when the city council suppressed the civil rights of 59 citizens to vote on a matter that directly impacted them. The fact that the city has repeatedly failed to follow the national safety standard is wrong. However, the manner in which petition 449 was handled by the city council was immoral. It is a, it was a major petition, 67 signatures of support. Two city council members ignored 59 votes, so that they could state 12 households want the signs, but only eight do not. Suppressing the votes of the other 59 citizens was ethically wrong. Approving this application process to formalize the voter suppression was immoral. It is the responsibility of the government to protect the civil rights of citizens to vote on matters that directly impact them, not suppress the input as this application process will do. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Teal, for being here. There's several items on the further information block for the council to review. No actions needed on any of these items, and with no further business to come before council, we are hereby adjourned. I call to order the Midwest City Municipal Authority. We have consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda. Trustees by unanimous consent can approve. Routine agenda items by one motion. If any trustee requests to discuss an item, or if there cannot be a unanimous consent, then the item will be removed and heard in regular order. Chair to entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension? Motion carries. We now move into new business public discussion. Does anyone have anything to bring before the municipal authority? Hearing or seeing none, we are hereby adjourned. I call to order the Midwest City Hospital Authority. We do have a consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agendas. Trustees by unanimous consent can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any trustee requests to discuss an item, or if there cannot, if there's not unanimous consent, then the item will be removed and heard in regular order. Chair to entertain a motion.
Move to second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension? Motion carries. There are two discussion items on this agenda, and no actions required by council on these items. We now move into new business public discussion. Does anyone have anything to bring before the authority? Hearing or seeing none, we do have an executive session. I would entertain a motion to adjourn and move on to the other agenda.
Recession.
Or recess, I'm sorry.
Make the recess.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension? Motion carries. I now call to order the Special Economic Development Authority. Once again, a consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agendas. Trustees by unanimous consent can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any trustee requests to discuss an item, or if unanimous consent is not received, then the item is, item or items will be removed and heard in regular order. Entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve, sir.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension? Motion carries. Now move into public discussion. Does anyone have anything to bring before the Economic Development Authority? Hearing or seeing none. I call to order the Midwest City Special Utilities Authority. Once again, there's consent agenda, and these items are placed on the consent agenda. So, trustees by unanimous consent can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any trustee requests to discuss an item, or unanimous consent is not received, then the item is removed and heard in regular order. Chair to entertain a motion.
Move to approve and point of order.
Yes, ma'am.
On the previous agenda, did you adjourn us?
I did not, and that's a good point of order, so we are hereby adjourned, and I call to order the Special Utilities Authority.
And now can I move to approve the consent agenda of the Special Utilities Authority?
Thanks for pointing that out, Ms. Eads. I have a motion. Do I have a second? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension? Motion carries. We move into public discussion. Does anyone have anything to bring before the authority? Hearing or seeing none, we are hereby adjourned this time.
Do you want to resume the Memorial Hospital Authority agenda and adjourn to executive session?
I have a motion to reconvene the authority. Do I have a second? I have a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Approved. Is anybody against it?
Does anybody have to abstain, asking for a break? An occasion in the air?
We're there.
Thank you. I do have a, before we go into executive session, I do have a statement to read. Public bodies such as the city council and its trust authorities are empowered to hold executive sessions in accordance with Title 25 Oklahoma State Statutes, Section 307. Section 307 provides that each executive session are confidential communications of certain topics that set forth in Oklahoma law, sees King Fisher v. Oklahoma. Failure to maintain confidentiality of these proceedings, if public body elects to move to executive session, will be reviewed as a violation of provisions of Open Meetings Law or Open Meetings Act, and violations of the provision of Open Meetings Act have been deemed as to be a misdemeanor and subject to the person of a fine of $500 or improvement and imprisonment of not more than one year. Ladies and gentlemen, we now move into executive session.
Hang on, we're going to read the item real quick.
And you have to read it. I'm getting ahead of myself here.
Discussion considers possible action, one, entering to executive session is allowed under 25 OS 307B3, discuss purchase or appraisal of the real property located within the city at 8800 through 8832 Southeast 29th Street, 13.28 acres located in the northeast corridor. The northeast corridor, Section 14 Township, 11 North, Range 2 West of the Indian Meridian of Oklahoma County, and in open session, authorizing the general manager administrator to take action is appropriate based on the discussion in executive session.
I'm going to reassert my motion to the executive session.
So, we have reassertions of both motion and the second to move into the executive session. All in favor, any of you saying aye?
Aye.
Reassertion of an aye vote.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here. We're now moving into executive session, and appreciate your participation.